I'm going to go to blue, all right. Good evening. I'd like to call a meeting to order and I'll ask for a roll call, please, by Madam Clerk.
Ms. Hodges, absent. Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Oden?
Here.
Ms. Roseburgen?
Here.
Mr. Kleindt?
Here. I'll turn to the City Clerk for a report on the posting of agenda, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The agenda you had before you was posting and calling in accordance with the Brown Act.
Thank you. We'll turn now to public comments. Anyone wishing to address the council on any matters within the jurisdiction? No, I'm sorry, on matters within the listing on the agenda. There are three items. It is the assessment District 161, the skateboard park, or the subcommittee appointment for the Palm Springs Unified. Very good, seeing no one. We'll close the public comments. We'll turn to our first item on the legislative calendar. Mr. Ready, we have item number one, which is an assessment District 161 known as Mountain Gate 30963. And before we start, I would like to note that I have an abstention due to a business conflict. I have done business with the owners of the property, so I'll pass gavel to Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor, I also have a conflict due to monetary interests.
And, Mr. Mayor, Pro Tem, before anyone does leave the room, I would just note that the applicant has asked to postpone this matter until next week, so I would ask that it be moved into the next week's agenda.
Well, I think staff just needs to do that because otherwise we have two members leaving, we don't have a quorum. So, staff, is, before you have an opportunity to discuss this, we are pulling it off the agenda and we will put it on your next meeting.
Very good. Job well done, Mr. Oden. Item two is the skateboard park. I'll again turn to Mr. Ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of Council. I would like to move this particular matter to next week's agenda. I would like to refine some of the numbers and bring it back for next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ready. I will turn to item three, which is the subcommittee appointment for the Palm Springs Unified School District. Recommendation is that the council appoint two members to serve on a subcommittee for PSUSD. Are there two members willing to serve?
Mr. Mayor, we talked about this and I think we all agreed that you and Ron would be great.
Yeah.
And I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that motion. Motion and a second to appoint myself and Mr. Oden to serve as the council's subcommittee on PSUSD matters. Any further discussions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seem unanimous. We'll then adjourn from this meeting and move into our study session agenda. And in this case, we'll turn to our city attorney, please, for a closed session report.
Yes, the council has met in closed session. The listed items, Plaza Theater, real property negotiations, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Real property negotiations involving the, it's a band, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Real property negotiations involving John Westman, this matter was not discussed. Litigation matter involving Desert Water Agency, we gave a brief status report, no action was taken. The real property negotiations involving the Walter Family Partnership, we gave a status report, no action was taken. The litigation matter, People versus Wilkinson, was not discussed, that will be on the next week's closed session agenda. The item involving exposure litigation in one case was not discussed. The initiation of litigation in two cases, one was discussed, no action was taken. And the labor negotiations, we gave a status report, negotiations, no action was taken.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Alshar. We'll turn now to public comments on matters within the jurisdiction of the entities. Anyone wishing to address the council on any issue, please come forward at this time. Very good, seeing no one. We'll close public comments. Turn to council comments, questions, or reports. Council?
Go ahead, Jeanie, I'll go after you.
Any council reports?
Yes. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
First of all, I'd like to really say how proud I am of our public safety, our police, fire, paramedics, who responded in a very professional manner during this situation we had last week with the bomb scare. And after I heard, I just happened to go down to the area, so I had an opportunity to be with them during this entire scenario and actually watched in the monitor as all this place, I also saw when you arrived as well. And I want to say I'm real proud of them and it's good to live in a city where you know you have people, especially in public safety, that you can depend on. On Monday, I attended an energy task force meeting for Riverside County here at City Hall, and I'd like to say tomorrow evening, we have scheduled a joint tribal council meeting. I am chairman of Riverside County Community Action Commission, and I will be unable to attend that meeting. I have submitted that other information that was requested by the clerk and by you, Mr. Mayor, so that hopefully we'll not schedule meetings on the Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oden. Any other council comments, questions, or reports?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Just a brief report that Sunday evening, late afternoon evening, I attended the finals for the weekend with Elvis and, on Mother's Day, at the request of my wife. And it was, it was truly amazing event. I mean, I was impressed and I hope that we do have the opportunity to bring that back next week. It was incredible. I thought it was very well attended and very well run, and I can see how it could expand, so. And me, even saying that is incredible, so.
It was worth the announcement just to get it from you. That's amazing. He is a hound dog. He is a hound dog. Very good. Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll turn to our city manager for comments or follow-up on requests. Ready?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're ready to proceed into the agenda items.
Good deal. Let's go to item G1, which is the city council's topics tonight. First one is a budget update, and we'll ask for a staff report on that, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Members of council. This evening, we would like to present to you basically what is the framework for the budget that will be presented to council and we hope to have the actual budget adopted during the first part of June. During this study session, we would like to outline for you both where we currently are, where we see the budget and the budget deficit for next year, and our solution of budget balancers, and our suggestions of where we would like council to give us direction if this is where the framework you would like us to bring to you formally. We also have an additional study session in two weeks to come back with any changes that you may suggest this evening. Also, as part of this study session, the budget task force that council formed will be here to report out on their several weeks of work and with any direction that council would have for further work for them as well. So with that, I would like to turn it over to our finance director and assistant city manager. They have a PowerPoint presentation and then we'll have plenty of discussion, and again, we can do it as we move through the budget process here or when we get to the end. So with that, Tom, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Ready, Mr. Mayor, Members of the city council. What we're going to go through is the budget presentation this evening, a summary of the revenues and appropriations, some estimates for the current fiscal year, where we think we are going so far this year, obviously the budget projections for next year. We're going to reprise some of the stuff that we've talked to you about in previous sessions, about what's causing the budget deficit, what's going up, what's going down. We're going to talk to you about the budget balancing options, and we hope we have, can get some direction from you on those particulars. The main part of the budget balancing is, of course, personnel changes, staff reductions, and so forth. We'll go through those in some detail. We'll talk a little bit about some of the program change requests, and we'll talk about the cash balance and where we think that will go depending on some of the direction you give us. Also, some of the financing strategies or some of the financing decisions that you're going to have to be making in the coming months, and perhaps some revenue generating opportunities, tax increases or other fees or other areas. The first slide we have there is the revenue sources. Again, just to recap, this shows you the revenue sources from fiscal year '03-'04 and a pie chart percentages. The largest single thing, of course, is the transient occupancy tax continues to be the largest, at 27 percent of the total revenue. Property taxes are next to 21 percent, and sales taxes at 13 percent. On the appropriation side, again, the public safety is nearly half of the total budget, and you can see the breakdown of the rest of the areas there. The revised estimates for fiscal year '02-'03, and if I could, well, let me just summarize here, the estimates of revenue is about $49.8 million for the current fiscal year. We expect to spend somewhere around $46.3 million with the transfers in and out from some of the funds, it transfers out primarily to the debt service funds and that primarily for the convention center debt service. We're projecting a deficit for the current fiscal year of about $362,000. That's obviously subject to change. I went back and took a look at the revenues for the current fiscal year and took down the estimates a bit for transient occupancy tax. March, as you may have noticed from a report I did for the month of March, was down about 12 percent, which was somewhat of a disappointment and certainly a surprise that it went down that far, partly due to the war in Iraq, partly due to the continued closing of the Marquis Hotel and just a overall reduction in the hotels. There wasn't any one place really that stood out that could have accounted for that. On the plus side, the building permit fees and the plan check fees and those kinds of building-related activities are increasing considerably more than I had anticipated and will be well over budget on those, well over the budget estimates on those. So that's the good thing. It's about the same place we looked at last, I think it was March 26th, when we came back to you the last time on this, and we were projecting about a $424,000 deficit at that time. The preliminary projections for fiscal '03-'04, and I want to point out that these numbers are if, what would happen if we don't make any of the changes at all that we're suggesting. So these are basically the current service levels and the current revenues projected out into fiscal year '03-'04. The revenues would be about $50.9 million. With the transfers in and out, we would have about $44.9 million. We would end up spending, or we would spend $49.3 million or have a deficit in the range of $4,448,000. We hope we've identified the deficit or the problems that are causing that early enough so that we can address those problems and not let them linger and get worse. The estimate that we had given you back in March, I believe, had a $4.2 million deficit in it. The next chart shows the revenue and expenses, and we just went back to fiscal year 99-00. And you can see that the revenues in the blue line exceeded expenditures and transfers out. That's good. That means we have a surplus there in those early years. They pretty much met in fiscal '01-'02. We did end up running us a very small surplus that year, I think, $64,000. And then in the current fiscal year, as I just got finished saying, it looks like we're going to have a relatively small deficit in somewhere in the $300,000 to $400,000 range. But if we don't do something for the coming year, that trend of expenses rising much faster than revenues creates a budget deficit, and a considerable one. If you take a look at the next page, it looks like we're having general fund revenues increasing at about the rate of 2% to 3% a year. Unfortunately for us, expenditures, primarily driven by pension costs, health insurance, workers' compensation, liability insurance, some, those things that are not entirely within our control are expected to go up about 5% or 6%. Now, it doesn't sound like a great deal of difference there, but when you start tracking what that is going to mean, for fiscal '03-'04, we have, as I said, the $4.4 million deficit. That would grow to 6.1 million if we didn't do anything in fiscal '05, and to 6.4 million in '06. Clearly not a sustainable sort of trend. We'd have to do something now.
If we don't do anything.
This is if we don't do anything right. And it tends to level off, or at least from what I can tell of the, where the numbers are going now, we kind of hit our peak, I think, on some of the cost, at least I hope so. It doesn't seem possible that it could go continual at, you know, 15% to 20% increases per year, for instance, for health insurance. A $6.4 million deficit is bad enough. That would get a little worse by a million dollars or so a year in the out years, if you're going way out there, '06, '07, '08. Here's some of the things that contributed to the current year deficit, and in current year, I keep on some back and forth here, I guess that means fiscal '03-'04, the year that we're about to adopt a budget for. PERS retirement cost went up about $2 million, health insurance, $200,000, and workers' compensation, Because of some increases in insurance, we had to eliminate the transfer of cash from the risk management fund, that's about $400,000 a year. The PERS fund, which actually had run a surplus in several years because we were what's called super funded, we had more money on deposit with PERS than we needed to, and we actually didn't have any PERS cost or pension cost for several years for the miscellaneous employees, everybody who's not a safety employee in police and fire.
We used that fund in previous years to help balance our budget, though.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, we use that and transfer that, those savings in effect, back to the general And we had some other transfers, about $170,000 that went away. Also have in here projected the loss of the hotel, or the TOT from the Spa Hotel. We have a discussion, I believe, tomorrow with the tribal council and hopefully we can give them some budget information, but at this point, I've taken the conservative approach and said that that money is going away. And we had to increase the subsidy to the golf course by about $400,000 from, it was at $200,000, excuse me, up to $600,000 to cover operating expenses and the debt service on the golf course. So that totals about $5 million. Some of that increase was offset by revenue increases and some other savings that we're able to find. Excuse me, do they? You have copies of these? Yeah. Okay. It might be useful to go to the PERS contribution rates and just get a feel for what that is because that's such a large number and what's driving a lot of the budgetary problems.
These last two pages of your, in your book, the last two pages of your book.
Back in.
And, and Members of council, if I could just note, this is one of the key driving factors of our budget deficit, and you will see on the graph of the state retirement rates and the graph, as you can see, the spike. And Tom, would you proceed, please? Thank you.
Sure. You can tell from the graph here, they've increased dramatically. The miscellaneous employees rate was at 7%, and actually, we didn't have to pay that because we were super funded for several years. Went to 8% in '03-'04, or, excuse me, '02-'03, is projected, and this is a rate we've already gotten from PERS, to go up to 11.73% in next fiscal year. And this is a projection from PERS and not an absolute certainty that it will be this much, but up to 21.9%. I guess what you could do is compare this to social security rate of 6.2%. The employer pays half, or pays that, and the employee pays that. The total is about 12.4%. So we were well under that rate for several years. We're about at that rate now in the coming fiscal year. We'll be above that for next fiscal year. The safety rates even, were even more dramatic. They went up from, well, let's say 9% for the fire and about 17% for the police, all the way up to next fiscal year, 31.3%, 32% for fire. Projections for '04-'05 are 45% plus for police and 43.6% for fire. So we're going to have additional problems of funding the pension plans next fiscal year, '04-'05, and we'll get a little bit into that more, I think, or the city manager may, about when some of the budget balancers, some of these are one-time things, but we'll have an ongoing problem. The revenue growth, I don't think, unless something really good happens, will be sufficient to cover those costs. The next slide, or the last page in your handout, shows the PERS rate components. Most of the additional costs that we're experiencing is because PERS is done poorly in the stock market, along with probably nearly everyone else who's been invested in stocks. The fixed rate component of the PERS rate for the various units, you can see there, it's in blue, 7% for miscellaneous, 9% for police and fire. The benefit adjustment for miscellaneous was only about 1%. The benefit adjustment for miscellaneous was only about one percent. And the market adjustment, which means in effect covering the stock market losses over the last few years, is about three point seven percent for the miscellaneous employees, fourteen percent for police, and eight point three percent for fire. Part of that is just the timing of when various benefits went into effect, which had the bigger impact, whether it was benefit adjustment or market rate adjustment. And that shows you where the rates are going to be in oh-three, oh-four. And again, those will be considerably higher the following fiscal year. When we were taking a look at the budget balancing framework, what could we do? What are the policy considerations? We tried to minimize the impact on direct services, the things that citizens of Palm Springs see and feel and have in front of them, the police and fire services, the library, parks, and so forth. We tried to minimize layoffs and maximize the reductions through attrition. That means that for vacant positions, we're looked at more closely than existing positions or people that were working here now. We hope to improve the cost recovery for services and just reduce all over, or overall expenditures. The next page, some budget balancing options, obviously, and it may be fairly obvious, but somewhere, increase revenues, eliminate recurring expenditures, streamline, privatize, combine, perhaps de-privatize, and we've done some of that, too, and there's some suggestions in here for that. We have some one-time budget balancing strategies, a reduction of capital expenditures, transfer some other funds. The next page is a summary and it gives you some detail on, let's see, I'm not sure. If I could take a moment, Mr. Mayor, and pass these out?
Follow me, it's Tom.
This is a summary, and you've seen this format before, of just some detail of where we see the budget picture going, the revenues. We're projecting some increases in the property tax. I think that's realistic. On the TOT, I'm showing that going up considerably from where we think we're going to end up in the current fiscal year. And that's for a couple of reasons. One, we're hoping that the Marquee Hotel sells and reopens as a hotel. We have, should have, well, we will have a full year of the Extended Stay America Hotel. Hey, next February is a leap year. We get one extra day. So there's a few factors in there that I'm hoping we start to rebound and see some increases in total TOT. And we'll come around, back around to some of the ideas about raising some of the revenues and some of the fees that are included in here. That'll be part of the budget balancers. On the appropriation side, and we've already gone through this, unless there's some questions specifically about, you know, why a particular area went up, we've discussed that in prior ones. The big increases, of course, are, as I said, in PERS, health insurance, workers' compensation. And percentage-wise, we did add some money in there for the film festival and that, that's still in here. Again, these are projections based on if we don't do anything. So you're coming down to that four point four million dollar deficit.
Council questions at this time?
Yes. In terms of property taxes, over the past couple of years, how much has that increased?
We've been increasing, the current year should be about seven percent increase over last year. We had one year there because of the county changing their formula where we didn't have an increase at all, or formula of distribution of property taxes. But it's been running six to seven percent for the last several years.
Mr. Mayor?
Stroden.
Have we seen any other shifts in terms of the revenue sources in the past couple of years, other than property taxes?
Favorable?
Favorable, definitely.
Well, just in the last year, I think the building permit fees and the plan check fees increased substantially. Now, that is project-driven and, you know, they can, they come and go pretty quickly there. There's a lot of stuff going on in town, a lot of things being built. The building activity is one bright spot where that revenue source and the fees that we charge for that, new development tax and things like that, have increased substantially. Also, one of the revenue sources, and you'll see it on the next page, the documentary stamp tax, which we get, county collects that. That's based on the sale of homes and is in effect based on resale values. And that's gone up a lot because resale values have gone up a lot in Palm Springs.
And along with that goes the property tax.
Yes, sir.
Tom, your allocations roughly for the year, based on about the fifth page in on your report, using fifty million dollars of revenue? Fifty point nine, all right?
Yes, sir.
And then you've got your ins, your outs, your available funds required and your deficits established. What do you think your, you got a forty-nine percent of your budget comes into public safety, is that right?
Yes, sir.
So give me an idea, how much we spend a year in public safety?
This current year, it's just over twenty-three million dollars, general fund.
And the twenty-three million dollars in your report here, you've got reasons for the budget deficit and you point out increase in PERS retirement costs. How much of that is public safety, the two million dollars?
Of the increased cost?
In the PERS, yeah.
Roughly, about half of it is from public safety. I don't recall exactly how much was police and how much would be fire, but about half was public safety.
Your TOT on the spa, again, there's no guarantee that's gone. You're just, again, playing it conservative?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm a little concerned based on your charts that show the growing separation between your revenue and your expenses, whether you go back to your pink and blue, which shows a growing gap. There is absolutely no way your expenses can stop breaking a sixty million dollar threshold when your revenues haven't even reached fifty-five. So as your projections show here, at current rate and performance, we cannot continue. So we've got to make some structural changes somewhere because we just can't carry the system as it's structured today. Is that a safe enough statement?
That's unfortunately true, Mr. Mayor.
I'm trying to get to the chart that shows the PERS and how you're getting from seven percent to nine percent to eleven percent up into the twenty-three. Those are the last two pages?
Last two pages.
So you go to the last, the second to last page and you start looking at percentages assigned to some of these lines you've got here. And when you're dealing with seven and eight and nine percent, we seem to be doing all right. But you start dealing with growth going into eleven, seven, and then the twenty-one, nine, and then the thirty-two, and then the forty-five. When you talk about percentage, what percentage of, what are you speaking? The contribution towards the retirement?
Yes, the, what CalPERS does is each year do an actuarial study based on the population of all the employees. In this case, we have three plans, one for fire, one for police, and one for everybody else. And they set the rates based on what they see as the actuarial shortfall and they adjust those rates each year. One of the components of setting the rates is the investment earnings. And they had done their projections at, I think, some, what they thought was conservative, about an eight and a half percent rate of return on their investments and they, in effect, gave us credit for that rate of return. Unfortunately, they didn't have eight point five percent positive. It was closer to about an eight percent negative. And to make up the difference now, so the funds or the, the pension plans are underfunded, they have to charge a higher percentage. These are percentages that are applied against the payroll. So in the case of miscellaneous employees, eleven point seven percent of all of our salaries, and it's just a handy kind of a measurement, are deducted and paid to PERS to fund the pension system.
When you say deducted, is it taken from this employee's salary or is it that portion of contribution that we make from general fund in addition to salaries?
Deducted from the general fund, yes. It's paid by the city.
So we pay the salaries and then we pay over and above that another eleven percent?
That's correct.
So when you start looking at the out-year of oh-four, oh-five, you're starting to look at, in the public safety, forty-five percent and forty-three percent in addition to their base salary. We're going to pay annually and almost fifty percent more towards retirement.
That's correct.
So in effect, you've almost got another half a level of service you're paying, but no increase in the service profile. Number of people employed. You're just paying that much more towards retirement, under this model. And then, of course, the green, the miscellaneous is tracking below that, mind you, but at twenty-one percent. Because if you look at those charts, as illustrated on the screen, that's where I think our biggest gap and problem is today. And as you can clearly see by the spiking in the future years, it's going to be absolutely, in my estimation, almost impossible, absolutely impossible to maintain that kind of growth. If you have growth in your revenues as you project two to three percent and we've got COLAs of two to four percent, we don't have parity. I mean, you're not, you're not keeping up with your COLA. What's your COLA projection for this year going to be? Three and change, almost four?
We projected the budget out at three point two percent. And the COLA increases for those bargaining units that are going to be getting a pay raise is based on April to April. March to March was a three point seven percent increase, so we're going to have to wait another week or so to see what it is. It'll be somewhere between three and four percent pay raise for this coming year.
And yet our revenues aren't tracking at anywhere close to that plus the PERS?
Not our current revenues, no.
Realistically speaking, are there revenues that you believe we can generate in any sort of mystical way that could keep track with these PERS numbers?
Well, I don't think it would be mystical, but there's some revenues that we'll take a look at and that's part of the presentation a little later on.
Because I am, I am at this point willing to listen, but I am absolutely concerned that there is no way you can generate a thirty-three percent increase in your revenues to catch up to the PERS. You can't get a growth rate of thirty-three percent every year.
Okay. And maybe I'm misstating, I mean, you can't compare the total growth rate in PERS to the total growth rate in revenues. There's lots more in gross revenues than there is in total PERS cost. The total PERS cost in the current fiscal year coming up will be about four point two million dollars. So if these rates all go up thirty or forty percent or relatively speaking from where they are now, we're going to have somewhere between a million and a million and a half dollars more in additional expenses next year than we have this year. That means that we have to find a way to grow revenue or find new revenue that goes up about three percent. So you have to take your current growth rate, say, three percent, and increase it to six percent. Either finding new revenues or increasing existing ones by that amount.
When you look at this chart, why was it back in ninety-eight, ninety-nine that the rates were at thirty-two and came back down? Super-funding bring it back down?
Yeah, it certainly brought back down the miscellaneous plan down to the lower rate, down to the seven percent. And again, we didn't pay that out of pocket. The police and fire rates, I think PERS had been a little worried about performance. In that case, they under-predicted their performance. They, again, used seven, eight percent actuarial assumptions of revenue growth and in fact, they were gaining twenty, thirty percent. So we got the benefit of that in lower rates in the following years. PERS is a couple of years behind in setting rates, so the rates that we're paying for fiscal oh-three, oh-four are actually based on the actuarial projections and calculations on June thirty, oh-one. So it takes them that long to work all the numbers through the system to figure out what our rates are going to be.
Go ahead.
The other page I handed out was a comparison of all of the revenues and we have talked about this one before. There really isn't too much in the way of surprises on that one. Unfortunately for us, the state mandated reimbursement goes away. It's fifty thousand dollars. That's a part of the state's budget balancing. The airport security reimbursement from the TSA, that's a program that's ending in May of this year, the end of, the end of this month. We ran that through the general fund, the expenses and revenues, and they washed out, but I just put it in here because it was a fairly large dollar amount. Unless there's any questions on that particular page? As we said, we have a budget deficit of somewhere in the vicinity of four point four million dollars. This is our suggestion for where some of these things, or where some of that problem can be solved. We're proposing staffing changes that will save about one million, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
That's a one-time?
No, that would be ongoing.
Would be ongoing.
Most of those are staff reductions.
Now, Tom, you have the breakdown of those personnel changes.
Right.
Are you going to do that now or is that later in your presentation?
Do you want to go through the whole thing? You want to go through the personnel changes now?
Counsel, what's your pleasure? Understand, point with this and then come back to the personnel?
Yeah.
That's the handout that was given to you, the separate handout.
Okay. We'll stay on this budget balancer for the moment then.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're showing elimination of the COLA for the
He just brought it, he just brought it, Ryan. Sorry, I knew that other paper you had. Look, look, to your left.
Oh, wait a moment. No COLA, cost of living allowance increases for the department heads, EX employees. At this point, we're showing as a savings, no increase for the two bargaining units who have negotiations coming up. That still needs to be finalized in negotiation, so it's not an absolute certainty that they will agree to that, but we're showing it in here as a possibility. We're eliminating the lobbyist fee. This is a remainder of the state and federal lobbyists that we have had over the last few years. And we left a little bit of money in there for the budget and then we're just taking the rest of it out. We're talking about using the economic development program for the increase in the film festival funding. You may recall, last fiscal year, oh-one, oh-two, we appropriated four hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for an economic development program, essentially came from the sale of land. And that money has not been spent. It's currently appropriated, it's still on the books. And we're saying if we use two hundred thousand dollars of that to do the film festival funding, that allows us to reduce next year's budget by that dollar amount. And we cut the balance of it, a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. We're, I think it was last council meeting or perhaps two ago, where the council authorized using eighty-seven thousand dollars of that money for the Share the Legend ad campaign in the downtown. So we're spending or already have allocated some of that money. Cutting the balance of it is a hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. We'd increase the sales tax revenue in the general fund by three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Historically, as far back as I could see, the city has dedicated ten percent of the total sales tax collections to the capital projects fund. It's about seven hundred thousand dollars a year. We're saying reduce that contribution of the capital projects fund in, by half, only do five percent. That would, in effect, raise the revenue in the general fund by three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It's obviously means that fewer projects, fewer repairs and so forth get done out of the capital projects fund. We're going to be recommending a increase in planning and building fees, about three hundred thousand dollars. To do that, we'll have to have a formal study done. We estimate the cost of that at about fifty thousand dollars. The net revenue for next year would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Again, that would be something council would have to take action on. And we have transfers in from, there was some money left in the PERS fund from all of that super-funding calculations that had been done. There was money left in there, or is money, savings from the facility maintenance fund. We're talking about transferring some money in from these redevelopment project area number two, three hundred thousand dollars. This is essentially the savings that they have if we don't continue the arrangement that we have with the Spa Hotel whereby some of that money is rebated back. It basically saves it from there, so we're saying, let's use it in the general fund. The airport, a couple of years ago, had some deferred fees when they had some problems after the nine eleven events and the flights were way down. And the general fund deferred some of the charges to the airport fund. The remaining amount of that is a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, so we'd pull that back in. And I don't remember what the last hundred thousand dollar one was because I don't have it here on my chart. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's vanished.
But it was there. Sorry. Of all of the $3.9 million...
I think that was reduced capital expenditures from the '02, '03 transfer savings, general fund fiscal year '03, '04. Is that what it was?
Is that the final one? Yes, thank you, Mayor.
It was reduced capital expenditures for the fiscal year '02, '03. We're transferring the savings to the general fund in fiscal year '03, '04. And Tom can give you all the detail on that.
Yeah, we did that last time. Thank you, Mayor, for saving me on that one.
Mr. Prior, report.
Any of the personnel?
Yeah. Yeah, let me read off the other ones so if the council wants to write these down. The $200,000 was the facilities maintenance fund. The $100,000 was the PERS fund. And the $148,000 was indeed the airport repay the general fund for deferred charges. The 300, Tom, I don't have that one on this list. What was that 300?
That's the CRA, Mayor.
CRA?
Yeah. Transfer from the project area number two.
Okay.
And, Mr. Mayor, as you may have noticed, all of those budget balancers add up to $3.9 million. The deficit is about $4.4 million. And I believe our recommendation would be is to take the balance of that from general fund reserves, from the operating fund reserves.
And if I might, members of council, the reason for that is, actually, we already made the cuts to the tune of about $1,400,000. And I didn't think that the organization would be able to absorb additional cuts, whether through layoffs or attrition, in a one-year cycle. And also, it's, I would ask you if we looked at more of a longer two-year cycle because it's going to be not until after this budget is adopted that we'll know the effects from the state budget deficit on our budget. Also, next year, we will have all our bargaining units up for negotiation. And it's at that time that I think council needs that longer timeframe to make, give us direction on the structural kinds of changes that are needed to take place in our organization to change that structural element where expenditures are outpacing revenues at this point, especially because of the retirement issue. So that given being said, our request is to take that small amount, a smaller amount of the deficit gap from the reserves to get us through this year so we have the longer timeframe to address it in light of those other dynamics that we'll know about as we move through next fiscal year.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know how much, in how much detail you want me to go through on the proposed personnel changes. In summary, we're talking about eliminating 25 and 1/2 positions. There's some offsetting increased positions there, 6 and 1/2. But a net change, a reduction in staff of 19 positions for next fiscal year. And you have the detail attached to that that shows it by department, all the various changes that we're making. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on that or if you'd like me to go through department by department.
Counsel, what's your pleasure on the proposed personnel modifications? You've got the copy in front of you. You're pretty much aware of them. You've been tracking them. Any particular ones you want to bring forward, Mr. Ready?
Any, those are the detail of the $1,400,000 that was on line one.
Okay. Counsel, okay with that? Yeah. Just tells you what that 1, 4 represents. Because you want to see where the hits were.
And I would note to council that there are no, there are no positions at the department head level in within, included within this change. So there are no department head increases whatsoever.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
Under streets and traffic, what would we have left in that department?
Staffing wise, number, number of employees?
Yeah.
The total number? I think Scott. Sue? What I can tell you, the biggest change there, councilman, is, as you know, Mr. Cartwright had retired this year. And Mr. Cartwright represented the organization where was, there was, in essence, two levels of the mid-range managers. And with his retirement, we elected not to replace that position. And in essence, we're just going with that one level of mid-manager. In essence, they're going to be the supervisor-manager range without the double layer. So in essence, we've really only deleted one position there. Several of those other deletes that you see are some restructuring now. In the traffic signal maintenance, of course, you see some deletions. And in the street sweeper, and I would ask, if I could, David, David Brackian, if he could come up and he can address some of those specifics. Actually, I'd ask David and Sue to come forward. Because several of those that are reclasses. So in essence, they are not leaving. They're just reclasses to take up the slack of the Cartwright position that we are able to do without. So David, if you could address some of the numbers, please.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Oden's original question was how many are left in streets and traffic? There are about 14 currently. So that if we eliminate one, these five, that would leave us with about nine.
Okay, we're eliminating five and reclassifying two. Is that correct? So we'll have a net of three?
Well, if I could explain the electrician positions, you'll see that there's two that are deleted. And then it says underneath it, it says contractual services.
Okay.
The proposal there is that those services will be taken up under a contract rather than those two positions. Now, there's only one of those positions currently filled. Under motor sweeper operator, the exact...
By our contract, what contract are you referring to?
Well, the contract isn't in place yet, but contract out with the county of Riverside. And the same situation under motor sweeper operator. There's currently two authorized positions, one of which is filled. There will be a proposal brought to council to contract for those services as well.
So the cost savings that's identified includes the reduction for the savings? Or is that just in the employee cost?
I'm sorry, Mr. Oden, could you say that again?
If we're going to contract this out, does this amount include what we have to pay for the contract? Or is this just showing the elimination of the position here?
There'll be some other savings. This was just the personnel side of the savings. And I made an attempt to take how much of the personnel cost would be, of the contract would be personnel, and apply that against it. I think the overall savings will be greater because we'll, should be able to eliminate vehicles and maintenance supplies and things like that as well. There should be a net savings in doing it. There were two reasons really for doing both of these things, privatizing them. We had trouble hiring a maintenance, a traffic maintenance electrician. It was just, we just couldn't find qualified people to do it. And it's a better situation to have it done by a larger firm, or in this case, the county. And on the street sweeping, it's a matter of economies of scale. And one of the big cost items we have is trying to maintain our own street sweepers. And we'll be able to eliminate that cost also.
Yeah. I guess my concern is that before I came on council, we, as a city, were experiencing something very similar. And we privatized lots of stuff. And I've been on council long enough to see it come full circle. Where we sold our supplies, we privatized, and the quality of service that we had went down the drain. So then, now we're trying to hire back people to provide the same services for us in-house that we privatize. And I'm just not sure whether or not it's really worked for us because we keep coming back to the same place.
Councilman, if I could comment on the traffic. It was very clear, we had a real functional problem on the traffic maintenance.
David, I'm really not focusing so much on the specific of this, just the fact that we keep privatizing, bringing them back. Privatizing, bringing them back. And we've been doing this over and over again.
That's because when we privatize, we have a cost savings for a few years.
Yes.
And then it gets out of line again, and we're right back in the hole.
And then incrementally, what, we don't put everything in the contract. They throw in something else, and throw in something else. And we hire, and hire, and hire again, and we're right back to where we started. So I just, I'm just concerned about us being short-sighted in terms of making budgetary decisions for the future.
Let me give my spin on this. And you're right, there is a cycle to it. We privatize, and we bring it back in-house, and then we privatize. And I would suggest my observation, and I'll turn to staff for the, maybe they can sort of mediate between the two views, that there's a point in time where it is cost-effective to have it in-house. And then those costs rise and elevate. And then you turn to a private outsource, because it's a lower cost. And then they begin to elevate. And then you drop those and go back to an in-house. And I cite the jail. I think the jail was a situation where it was in-house, out-house. And now it's, it's became a situation where it's more cost-effective in a different mode. So what you're doing is you're looking for the most cost-effective way in which to deliver the service. But I'll turn to staff for an observation recommendation.
Which says that there isn't
There's no single way.
Potentially a better way, long-range, to address these issues than the back and forth, the in and the outhouses, you put it.
All right.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, on some of these, it's a case by case. On the traffic maintenance, if it could, for example. I sat across the table from the union leadership, the bargaining unit leadership, and I said to him, our traffic lights, for streetlights, not for streetlights, for traffic signal lights, are not working correctly in terms of the timing. And we knew that. And we needed it fixed because we didn't have the expertise. And we agreed. And I said to him, all right, we'll keep it in-house, we'll do it in-house. Let's change the position. We'll have personnel draw up the job specs, and we'll get the right person with the right qualifications to do it in-house. He was very happy. Everyone agreed. Sue Mills, Personnel Director, sitting right there, that is correct. And we did it. We went through the process. Unfortunately, we were not able to get a candidate. Is that correct? That is correct. So in that case, that's why we ended up going out. So I would just like to let council know, we are trying to do, do, keep it in-house when we can. In this particular instance, we were required to do the contract out. But I would note that the one technician, the one electrician, who instead of being laid off, is transferring over to the Recreation Department. So that person is still remaining in our employment. So that happened to be a good outcome.
Keep it in-house, outsource scenario. Give me the model on the in-house versus outsource. Why we go in and out as we do, why get in the flow?
In my view, Mr. Mayor, these items have to be looked at individually as opposed to a broad, a broad statement of whether it's better in-house or outsourcing. In the instance of street sweeping, I think is a classic example of how, how there is savings to the city of using a large organization that has a lot of street sweepers, which are a very, very high maintenance item. We cannot keep running, it's very expensive. And to use an organization that has a lot of those will provide us not only with cost savings in our analysis, but a better level of service than we've ever been able to provide by that. Now, in some other areas, that's not the case. And those areas where we can provide a service by in-house people, it's just not a fair comparison to certain things. And in the instance of traffic signal maintenance, we're not really privatizing. We're using another agency that has a larger organization and more skilled technicians because we have a greater and greater level of complexity with our system. And as Mr. Ready stated, we weren't able to attract anyone who wanted to work here.
Okay.
Was it that we weren't able to attract anyone that wanted to work here? Or there wasn't the knowledge in the staff that, in the Coachella Valley?
Well, we advertised beyond the Coachella Valley. And we weren't able to get anyone to meet the qualifications, which were a standard set of qualifications that we utilized based on Riverside County, San Bernardino County, and surrounding agencies who have these people. And we just weren't able to attract them to want to work here.
Okay, other council questions or comments? Tom, on your personnel issues here on the police, you've got your DARE and PAL officers. You've got something here covered by donations for the PAL program. Can you give us some background on what that is?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, David.
I recall, a tribe of Indians gave us a $30,000 donation, or actually gave the PAL program a $30,000 donation. And that with some other funds that we had in the safety augmentation funds should be sufficient to pay for that position for one year. It's a trading off, the currently is performed. The PAL officer is a safety officer right now, a police officer. And that would be civilianized. And the cost is about $45,000 a year for the total cost of that program. And we have it covered at least for one year via the donation.
Good, very good, thank you.
So what can we do on the revenue side? Property tax, we've done that. We've really worked to enhance the property tax from 11 years ago that I know of.
Oh, yeah.
This loss from the Spa Hotel, we're going to talk to them tomorrow night. I assume that's on our agenda. Franchise fees. David, franchise fees, anything there?
We have the...
A couple of slides ahead of me. If we can get there in just a couple of minutes, if I can. We have to go in order, Ms. Prorly Spurgeon.
Okay.
I'm kidding.
Then I'll save my comments.
It's just a little bit here. Let me just go through the adjusted cash balance, if I may. We ended up last fiscal year with a adjusted cash balance. This is the money that's truly available for reserves in the general fund and community promotion fund of about $8.1 million. As the, after the results of the current year, where we expect a deficit of about $362,000, the adjusted cash balance at the end of this fiscal year, June 30, '03, will be about $7.7 million. Again, if we didn't do anything and we decided to just go ahead and live with that $4.4 million deficit, we'd end up with an adjusted cash balance next year, June 30, '04, of about $3.3 million. If we implement all of the budget balancers, and they all are, come in at the dollar amounts that I projected, that would add back, and we'd have a cash balance of about $7.2 million. So we'd have seen or would have seen a somewhat gradual erosion of the total cash balance. But it still would be at $7.2 million, just slightly under the council policy direction to try to get to a 15% of operating fund expenditures to have as a reserve. It'd be about 14%. One of the things we wanted to talk to you about is on the bonding opportunities. The Convention Center expansion is going to be coming back to you again, I'm sure, fairly soon. And that's going to have an impact on next year's budget. It depends on how big of an expansion is, and how big a price tag it has. One of the things that you may want to consider on that bond issue, presuming you go forward with the expansion of the Convention Center, on the Visitor Information Center, costs us about $600,000 to buy it. It looks like it's going to cost about $500,000 or so to rehab, to redo the center, somewhere around $1,000,001. It's really not large enough to be cost-effective to do a separate bond issue. But we have choices there. We can either take that out of reserves, and that would reduce those cash balances that I referred to a moment ago, or we could add it to the Convention Center's bond issue. The incremental cost would not be substantially higher, we obviously have to pay the debt service on that, but there wouldn't be a lot of cost of issuance associated with that. And the annual debt service would be somewhere in the range of about $80,000 a year. Our current rent on the existing Visitor Information Center, and we don't own it, we pay rent on that, is about $60,000, is $60,000 a year. And we get some of that back by subletting it out to the tribe, and that's about $24,000 a year, I believe. So it depends on what rent we charge in the new place, but we could get pretty close to the same place that we are right now, no additional cost. And eventually, 30 years from now, we would own that building. But that's a financing option. If you don't choose that, then I don't see any other way, except to take that out of the current reserves, or to do a smaller financing, either a shorter-term lease financing, borrowing from another fund, something, some kind of internal financing like that. The most efficient way would be, if you're going to finance it, is to take it and add it to the Convention Center. We haven't talked too much about the animal shelter. We do have, in the current year budget, in the fiscal '02, '03 budget, $112,000 budgeted for studies, for the architectural and engineering studies, on the expansion of the animal shelter. The last time council gave direction on that was essentially to look at building our own, as opposed to going with a valley-wide animal shelter. But we don't have any new money in the budget right now, so I just basically wanted to point that out, that the only funding we have in there is the $112,000. Additional downtown parking, we do have about $300,000 left from the parking structure bond issue. We had put some money in there for surface street parking. And we had gotten a payment from one of the property owners of about $450,000. So there should be some money in there if you wanted to do some additional parking downtown. Now, it would be restricted to that, since it's in a special revenue fund, but that money is available.
Tom, is that in, exclude the money we have allocated for the Fashion Plaza parking?
No. That would have to come out of that, those two sources of funds.
Did we allocate, when we're gonna turn to, half a million dollars towards that epic? And how much of that was parking versus redevelopment money?
I believe that we're all taking all of that out of the parking fund, because it was parking improvements in front of the Desert Fashion Plaza.
Okay.
Ms. Rallos-Purgeon asked a moment ago about, you know, what revenues could we take a look at, what could we raise, could we increase effectively the collection rates of? We think that one area you could take a look at is on permit fees. We have not increased those at a rate even approaching inflation over the last 10 years or so. I think we took them up 5% last year. Would require a study to justify a substantial increase, but we think that if we did that study, we would find that we are not recovering all of our costs, especially our overhead cost on that, and that a wide variety of planning, building, and other kinds of fees, building-related fees, could be increased. And those are general fund fees, and would go to offset general fund expenses. We could take a look at increasing the business license tax. We haven't increased that one in about 12 years. That one would have to be, go before a vote of the people, it's a tax increase. So to pick a number out of the air, if you took it up 30%, would be about $220,000 annual increase in additional revenue. Again, it's a general fund, would be unrestricted, and could be used for that, be used for any general fund purposes. Some new fees or taxes that if you would like us to consider, we could take a look at an emissions tax. That would cover everything from movie theaters, to the follies, to special events, depending on how you structured it, either as a per-ticket charge, some fixed dollar amount, or a percentage. Obviously, it depends on where you would set the rate. A 3% tax, I think, would probably generate somewhere in the vicinity of about $4,000 to $500,000 a year. We could take a look at a Mellow Roos district, public safety tax. As an example, public safety, you could use it for other purposes, but that would probably be the most popular one, and guarantee some public safety. You'd have to spend it on that. Again, it would require a fairly long process. There are some considerable collection costs along with that particular vehicle. We could take a look at a landscape and lighting district, and I know that several council members were here when we went through that, I think it was about '92 or so. And we went pretty far down on the road on doing a lighting and maintenance district. It was a parcel tax. And at the 3:00 in the morning, I think we finally pulled it off the agenda, and it did not happen. But it's something, if you were interested, we could, again, take a look at. And a fee that we used to have, a paramedic fee for service, actually, we didn't have paramedics back then, but we had a fee for the fire department responding as first responders to medical emergencies. It was a different scale, sliding scale, but from $40 to $60. The problem that we had with that one back then was that the insurance companies would not honor that, because we don't, the city of Palm Springs does not transport people to the hospitals, so we couldn't get the insurance companies to pay that. And we got down to the people, "Well, we'd send the bill to them, and I don't have any money, and I can't pay the bill," and a lot of them got waived, because the people were indigent. They simply didn't have the means to pay it. So after several years of that, and it was a relatively minor source, I think the last year, when we finally pulled the plug on the program, was 1996, and we were taking it at about $28,000 a year. Collections costs were very high on that.
Maybe that was our problem, is that we don't transport.
How do we look at the idea of transport? What steps do you take?
We have a paramedic program. That's what they need for, we become either a public-private partnership with the ambulance company, or we become, we take over an ambulance.
Or we find a creative way? Yeah, good point.
Yeah, yeah.
We certainly could get into the ambulance transporting business. Actually, we could even do it in combination with some of our neighboring cities.
Yeah.
So that's certainly an option.
I mean, it's a huge revenue source.
I wouldn't be opposed to looking at fees for service in that arena, and I'll broaden it, whether it's, as you suggested, in the paramedics, or in other kinds of structures. There are other cities that have looked at different ways in which to generate revenue to actually cover the cost of that service. And I would welcome staff's investigation into any and/or all opportunities and options. Ms. Rallos-Purgeon?
Just an ALS transport with an EMS component.
Okay.
Let's try it. Out of the box, let's try it.
You know, when I saw the first thing under the new fees and taxes, it said emissions tax, and it was said in such a way that I actually thought it said emissions tax. And I was thinking of air quality, air pollution, I thought, boy, you could make a fortune based on some of the tailpipes in this town.
[laughing]
But unfortunately, it wasn't a tax of my dream. Sorry, sorry. Obviously, the revenue opportunities still include those models we've been using, which, on property, we've got a lot of construction underway, a lot of housing going on, a fair amount of commercial. You've got the new potential big-box operators down at Section 20. There are probably 24 to 30 months offline before they start actually generating revenue for us, between entitlement process and build-out, and then collection, and return of the revenue back from county. So you've got some revenue streams down the road. I don't suggest that some of the big boxes that are being looked at would sort of take from existing businesses in our town. I think they might generate a new source of revenue for us, and bring new monies into our community. We can continue doing that. Section 20 has become sort of a highlight. Section 20 is that section of land that's on the corner of Ramone and Jean Autry, in the southwest corner. Will owes it currently, and other big boxes are considering establishing a front. It's a critical mass to the collection of those kinds of revenue generators in the retail world. Mellow Roos, I think that's something that's being looked at by some developers, hasn't it? By Burnett up on the End of Sunrise? Wasn't that discussed as one possibility? Mountain Gate, no?
Mountain Gate's a 1915 assessment.
1915, not the others.
Were there Mellow Roos discussions as to the possibilities of Burnett?
Burnett.
Yeah, okay, okay. But that's not for public safety, that was for his improvements, wasn't it?
Right.
Okay.
Okay? Mr. Mayor, I have one other piece of information to hand out, if I could.
Sure.
This is our capital improvement plan, or at least the ones that were submitted for consideration to us. And we can save this for the discussion for the 28th. We have not on here, except for those projects that are either funded by, excuse me, the TOT increase, which is the Phase 1 of the Convention Center expansion, Measure Y projects, which come from a portion of the utility users' tax, which is used for the library and parks, or are coming from grants. We have not prioritized the rest of it. And you can see there that there's, the part that is not highlighted on there, the, all those projects total $2.2 million, and we have $350,000 of money to try to prioritize within there. So we'll come back with some suggestions, but obviously, if you have questions about that between now and two weeks, if you could let Mr. Reddy know, and we'll try to get you some information.
And we did want to give this out, because we are asking, as you know, to cut for next year's capital budget in half. But again, Councilman Oden did ask the question, what would not be funded if we did such a thing? And so this is the list. Thank you.
Okay. Council questions, comments, requests for additional information? I guess my only comment, Tom, and I think I had the same discussion at the last year's budget session, on some of the projections, based on percentages here, on your preliminary projection sheet that you gave out here. You had talked about, and I'm working off of this, yeah, more than your other reports, you're talking about some pretty good-size increases, perhaps in '03, '04. And I think I had asked if, in fact, we should play that a little more conservatively, so we don't get ourselves in trouble. We took action today at Riverside to take a look at our budget there. It's about $150 million budget. And we use projections of around 6.6% in the sales tax area. They talked about State Board of Equalization providing cities and other agencies their projections for the upcoming year, 4.5%. Some of these numbers in this report out of Riverside are somewhat lower by measure to what you're recommending here. How are the numbers different? What does the State Board of Equalization provide us that's different, that would generate your different kinds of numbers? Are we just outside that median line? They're saying 4.5, and you're tracking higher numbers here.
Right. There's a couple of things that are happening. First of all, the State Board of Equalization tends to give more blended rates where they see things. Northern California is experiencing some really big downturns. I don't know if that's affecting the overall percentages that they're projecting. Secondly, we have a very strong housing market, new buildings are going up. That generates sales tax. Those builders pay sales tax on those materials indirectly, and we get a piece of that. So even if retail sales are a little soft, we've still seen that going up. And fortunately, from a tax perspective, unfortunately, from some other expenditures perspective, gasoline is much higher than it was a year ago, and that is a really large component of our total sales taxes. What, the sales tax on gas, and our piece of that. So with all those considerations, I took the sales tax estimate up to 7.3%. You know, Mr. Mayor, you're right, you said you had those same concerns last year. I would point out, though, that in the budget estimate for fiscal '02, '03, I projected $49,898. And my revised estimate for, and this is through activity in March, is $49,810, so that's, that's pretty close, you know? Some things went up, some went down, but-
I'm giving you the window, Tom. Come on through, buddy.
It's pretty close.
Come on. Your numbers are always fairly accurate, you know? Okay? I could be happy with those kind of representations.
Yes, thank you.
But you wave your own flag and blow your own horn, because you did a fine job in your projections. All right. Well, council, other questions, comments, any direction you want to give staff on this? Are you comfortable in the direction that Mr. Reddy and his staff are taking this budget? You okay with it? For new revenue generation? Although, we wouldn't get those in place for the budget, but you're okay with, if you were to continue in this path, and make the recommendation ultimately in a month's time, to use that this is the budget?
But we have to look, we have to try to find a long-term fix.
Yeah.
You know, we're just putting Band-Aids on this.
Yeah. Yeah, we got a sling on the arm, we got to heal it.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could, the long-term fix, indeed, will have to come in the next fiscal year, in terms of the true structural changes that will occur with the employee unions, as I see it, that will all come to the bargaining table next year. Because many of the cuts you see here are the one-time budget balancers, and we will not have that ability. We made the million-four cuts this year. In essence, I'm gonna need another three mil, minimum $3 million worth of cuts for next year, or permanent cuts.
And that was on the backs of people.
Yes.
Unless you can generate $3 million of new revenue.
Uh-huh. And I bet you could.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mills?
Just a comment to do with, to do with cutting and staffing. And it really deals with what we just went through on the task force regarding building, planning, engineering. As Tom said, those fees that those departments are bringing in are substantially higher than they've been in the past. With the load it looks like we have now, they appear to be holding that. And I think you projected more, in what you did, in the '03, '04 budget, you projected it being greater than it was this past year. Is that right, Tom?
In terms of total revenue?
Yeah, fees generated out of that.
I took it down a little bit from where I think we'll end of this fiscal year. I'm not sure we'll sustain that much activity. It's pretty high, though.
But, but the, the point is, we have, what I don't want to do is to delete or not fill positions in those departments, which are revenue-producing departments, that may cause that revenue to drop, may cause people to lose interest in Palm Springs because of problems in processing. I think it's, I think it's very important that we, that we take a look at that. And I think it might be very important to glance at the weekly reports from the Planning Department. The comments in there are very interesting to me, and I don't want to see us create a problem here now, and try to fix something with not looking at what may happen to us in the future, and cause more of a problem. So I think if we can bear that in mind when we're, when we're looking through there. I know we're not looking at any cuts personnel-wise now, but we may need to fill some spots there. Okay? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may comment, Mr. Councilman Mills raises a good point, the EDC task force on the development. They had recommended, as you know, two positions in that area, actually, maybe up towards three. That is not represented- That is not represented here. The council has, has asked us to bring back the implementation plan. So at the next meeting, that will be included in addition to the, a couple of capital items, such as the E permitting government online. So council will see those at the next budget meeting.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
While I, I agree with the part of what Councilmember Mills is saying, I, I think that until, to increase our fees in, in the planning, building and planning department, unless we can show clearly that we have improved or increased or providing better service can turn to work against us rather than to help us. So until we've addressed all of the issues that we have in that department, I think we should hold off on doing any increased fees.
I would only suggest that we look at it from the standpoint that if there's a cost associated with doing business in that area, then that cost should be carried by those who are doing the business and not per se off of the property tax or off of other sales revenues. And right now, it's costing us more than we're collecting to provide the service. 218 allows us to charge that which it costs to provide the service. I don't believe we're doing an adequate job of getting the, the fees that the citizens deserve we collect, providing a service, we're subsidizing basically the operation. So that has to be analyzed. I agree with you, Mr. Oden, I don't want to put any obstacles towards development, but at the same time, if it's a cost center, it has to be looked at. It's to be looked at. Yeah, just balance it out, get it closer. Okay, anything else?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Styles from the Budget Task Force is here too, if you...
We're going to bring him up, we're going to take a short recess for about 10 minutes and then we'll bring up the Task Force for their report. Thank you.
We'll call the meeting back to order, and the next item on the agenda is a Budget Task Force report and recommendations. Mr. Styles.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. On behalf of the Budget Task Force, and we have met on a fairly steady meeting scheduled for the last couple of months, I would commend the staff for their support. I think every question has been fully answered and we've probably got more questions than answers to go, but I think we have learned a lot of things. Two of the things that come to my mind, that if things stay as they are, business, the city does business as it does now, somewhere out five to eight years, employee costs will exceed the total revenue of the city. And that creates kind of an ominous thing over the horizon. And you take it down to the smallest level, when it's easier to lay off an employee than take away a cell phone.
We'll call the meeting back to order, and the next item on the agenda is a Budget Task Force report and recommendations. Mr. Stiles.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. On behalf of the Budget Task Force, and we have met in a fairly steady meeting scheduled for the last couple of months, I would commend the staff for their support. I think every question has been fully answered, and we've probably got more questions than answers to go, but I think we have learned a lot of things. Two of the things that come to my mind, that if things stay as they are, business, the city does business as it does now, somewhere out five to eight years, employee costs will exceed the total revenue of the city. And that creates kind of an ominous thing over the horizon. And you take it down to the smallest level, when it's easier to lay off an employee than take away a cellphone. The system has got some dysfunctions built into it. And those are the kind of things that we are dealing with, but in terms of a specific recommendation tonight, and when we started, it was a fairly broad approach to things with shotgun questions, and we've slowly brought those down to a focal point. But in the reality of what we're trying to do for next year's budget, our unanimous recommendation to the City Council endorses the City Manager's Budget Balancing Program. We realize that there's some funds that would come out of reserves, but reserves are there to be used in these kinds of situations. They're not there forever, but this is a crucial year, and if you really cut everything out to balance it based on income, you would hamper city services, and I'm not sure that's fair to the citizens. The other issue then that we bring for you, and which is really a question to the Council tonight, is when we started the task force, our goal was to look at the budget and bring back recommendations. What we have really realized is that we're not going to make recommendations for this year because we support the City Manager's budget approach, but we really need to look at the year beyond and beyond that. And is that part of our mission? When this task force was formed, how long do we go? And so the question is there, and do we continue as a city-appointed task force? Do we go back to something similar to the Development Task Force? So we've got a question on proceeding, and we would like some direction on that. Our motion, when we talked about that, was eight to one. We had one member who felt that we should remain without any discussion as a public body. I'm not sure the rest of the members felt strongly one way or the other, as long as we had direction on how to proceed and if we should proceed. And that would conclude my comments. There are six other members of the Budget Task Force here tonight. If you would like to hear for them, or if you have any questions of them, I don't think any of them are, I think they are all prepared to respond. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Council questions, comments?
Yes, first, if you would just introduce the members of the task force who are here.
I'm going to ask them to stand and introduce themselves.
Okay, then.
Glenn Bishore.
Steve Nichols.
Mike McCullough.
Sherimah.
Jim Vogt.
Paul Madison.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Oden.
I guess it became fairly apparent to us, I believe as council members, that you would not be able to make the recommendations to us in time for this year's budget. And perhaps we need to look a little more closely at what we expect from you, and perhaps within a certain timeframe, to get back to us with recommendations for the future.
I think there's some, we're looking for some direction in there, and in my mind, and I'm not sure about the meeting schedule, but I think probably it's a four to six-month process to go through it and come up with some specific recommendations. And in terms of a structure, when we started, it was the group meeting, and I think probably based on discussions at our last meeting, we'll go into some subcommittees and try and focus more in-depth on certain areas so that we can come back and have meaningful discussions in the hour and a half we meet.
Okay. Mr. Mills?
Certainly, John, as Mr. Oden said, we were not expecting an answer for this budget. I think we were all concerned about this year. I think all of us saw coming what Tom showed us tonight, where things are heading. And we're looking for recommendations, policies, a spectrum of things that we can address in the future. And I think we cannot afford to just wait till three months out or four months out to deal with. I think we need to start dealing with '04, '05 now. And so our hope would be, I think I speak for all of us, that the Budget Task Force could stay together and focusing, you're right, it's hard to do as a large group, but I'm sure staff, as you need their support, would be willing to work with the focus groups out of the task force as well. And I think that is where you really get the in-depth look at it. And I think that would be very helpful to us. If you guys are willing to stick together and do it, we'd certainly, I think, like to see you do it.
Well, I think the members of the task force, we've gone through the tough part, the learning curve, and I think everybody is willing to go forward, and we just wanted some direction, and I think you provided that tonight.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ellis-Purgen.
I'll tell you, from my point of view, I remember when we had the Blue Ribbon Committee before on budgetary issues, that for me, it was putting together great fiscal minds that would be able to look at this budget, maybe with different eyes. You know, we've become so close to it and close to the people, that maybe we would, you could help us think out of the box, which is what we need to do, because we do need to come with, to come to this budget with different ideas and a long-term fix, instead of purrs that we knew when we balanced the budget years ago, that we were doing it on the back of that, and that it was eventually going to come back to get us. So I want to hear some answers. I want to hear some suggestions. So as far as I'm concerned, I want you to go on.
I think we've heard that loud and clear. May I back up to another task force for just a minute, because Councilman Oden brought it up, Development Task Force. I think that initially has been very successful. I think staff has cooperated 110% to implement. In the last month, out in the community with large and small contractors, developers, I have heard nothing but positive comments on the process. And this is much better than it was six, eight months ago. And it's a time when there's a lot of stuff going on, and it seems to be handled well, and people are satisfied. And so I just, I think you need to know that, that I think staff is just doing a great job in moving this thing forward to the benefit of the whole community. And with that, I'll say thank you and good night.
Let me give you my comments, if I can, John. It's pretty rare that I don't get a chance to put a two cents in the pot here. When the Budget Task Force was discussed, it was a Budget Task Force, it was a Finance Task Force, it had a number of names. It was first, I think, brought up just after the election of November, when there were a number of ballot measures that were challenging, if you will, some of the aspects of how we were governing Palm Springs. And one of the concerns we had was, we need to get somebody besides us talking about how we govern, where the money comes from, how it's spent, what we do, the delivery of services. So part of the role, part of the responsibility that we saw, at least initially, was sort of this educational process, that if we start blowing the horns, like, ah, there they go, you know, touting their own successes and so on, defending their own position. So what we wanted was sort of this independent body to analyze, as Jeannie says, be outside the box, be outside the confines of City Hall, and look at it, and then say, you know, this does make sense, or you could better it in the following way. So in some ways, the education is based on then the investigation. So then part of your charge was to investigate. Now, what you had to do, of course, and I saw the packets of information that staff gave you on a weekly basis, if not twice a week, we wanted to see what you were getting, and you were kind of getting a lot of information. And now what I didn't want to happen, is I didn't want you to start trying to assume our role, you know, making the decisions that we have to make. You guys got to be sort of outside the council machinery, and start looking at things a little differently, and give us some kind of investigations, get back to us. And then sort of the recommendations. I think the task force came together pretty quickly. You all recognize that. We were short-term, short-fused, had a lot of work to do, and you guys went through a tremendous amount of information. And I appreciate the fact you gave Mr. Reddy and his staff support for the recommendations on the budget, because it gives a little bit of credence and support for the direction we're trying to take the city's budget this year. I would be more impressed with either one of two options. One, take this body that you've constructed, and we used it basically on an EDC 50% model, and then, you know, at large, whether it goes back to the EDC, and then you guys go back and think-tank it a little bit, and say, okay, independent of city and government, what do you think we should do, and come back. And then the other aspect is, if there should be a standing, per se, finance committee, and if so, what is it? How is it constructed? How is it appointed? How do you go through the application process, and how do you invite the entire community to come forward? As Jeannie says, the finance minds, you know, the gurus of industry come forward and kind of give input. So I mean, there's two ways to go forward here. I think you guys are sort of at a stop point, and the question is, where do you go from here? How do you evolve? To start the process today for next year's budget, that's a pretty long-term commitment. And I don't see it as a task force as much as it is, if it's going to be that long a commitment, it may not have task force. It may be a different kind of, it becomes a committee structure. Because then what precludes you from saying, well, we need your same input in the following fiscal year, and then the following fiscal year? If what you're going to give us is an outside view, an outsider's view, then there may be justification in trying to analyze the validity of a standing, if not fully installed commission, committee, that looks at the finances, as that independent eye. And then the question is, what exactly am I saying? What role do you have? What responsibilities? What's the mission? Because if you can't define the committee, the commission, then how do you define the task force? Because there's got to be a distinction. Task force, to me, is almost to the term of ad hoc. It's got a specific task, it's charged, it's got a mission, a timeline, bring it back, thank you, and then you disband it. But if it's going to be a standing body, then the question is, what exactly is it that the council needs from a standing body? Because if I'm going to ask you to go to work for a year, I don't see it as a task force.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
I see it clearly as a task force. I think if we are clear in giving them the parameters in which we want them to work, I don't see doing a finance committee because it's advisory. Why would we have people work year in and year out to make recommendations to us that we don't have to listen to? I think for people in this crisis situation that we are experiencing again, have some professionals to look at the budget, make some specific recommendations to us. Hopefully, we will handle these recommendations differently than perhaps we have handled recommendations from budgetary task force in the past, and that we will take them to heart, or at least guidelines, when we're making decisions that affect the future. I clearly see it as a task force, and I think we could give them four months, six months, to be back with us with their recommendations, and it's over.
I think that this group of people has learned to work together, and I think that's an important thing, because you don't change the dynamics of the group in midstream. I think it's a shorter-term effort, and maybe six months maximum. I don't think anybody's committed for the long term. I think they're in there to come up with some suggestions. We know we are not a decision-making body. We're there to put out, at some point, come with some specific suggestions, and come out, do that, and that would pretty much complete the job.
I think we can call them volunteers that care about the community and want to help us solve this problem. I mean, who cares what they're called?
Okay, thank you. All right. Shall we go to item two, then? Let's talk about a Quimby Act ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I would ask the Director of Planning, Doug Evans, to come to the microphone, if he would, and he will give us the report on the Quimby Act ordinance. This is with regard to, it's a developer fee actually, and I would ask Doug to give us the details, and we would ask council for some direction, if in fact you would want us to bring such an ordinance to the regular council agenda. Thank you. Doug?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to give you bits of information and give you an update on the Quimby Act. I'd like to talk, you know, first, very quickly, where are we today with parks? And we couldn't make this report today without Scott Meisel's input, planning input, economic development input, city attorney's input. So I just got elected to try to give you a quick overview, and it's five after, so I got to go quick. Currently, right now, we have 140 acres of developed parks in the city. That's a ratio of a little bit over three acres of park per 1,000 population. That's exactly the minimum standard we have in our general plan. The general plan standard says a minimum of three with an aspiration of five. If you take a look at, you know, some of the SCAG projections, if we look at 2030, they would say we should have 171 acres. If you look at build out of the city, on a three-per-thousand ratio, 231 acres of parks. So we're looking at roughly a 100-acre expansion. One of the things that you have to take into consideration in this town is, when you talk about recreation opportunities, what we have that we don't actually own or pay for on the city's behalf. Indian Canyons, Takwitz Interpretive Center, two phenomenal facilities done by the Tribal Council. In our community, we have a lot of private recreation. We also have public recreation that you pay for fee, i.e. golf that the city owns. So if you were to add up all of the other types of facilities that are currently available in the city, the 140-acre figure would go up. It's different type of park facility. If you look at a ratio that would be the general plan high goal...
Excuse me, I just need you to clarify that. The private and the tribal stuff is not included in the 140 acres.
140 acres is what the city currently owns and actively uses and maintains.
Okay, all right.
So it's our traditional parks. If you look at a five-per-thousand figure, you know, we should have 214 today, and at build out, 355 acres of active park-type facilities. That may be a bit high, and I think Scott and I have been talking, that we think probably the benchmark is somewhere around three because of the other recreation opportunities in town. Taking a look at existing sources, and we're playing with the numbers in the computer, we have roughly 1,800 acres of residentially zoned land left in the community that's undeveloped, that this type of fee could apply to. We're taking a look at the cost to acquire land, the cost to develop parkland, because we have to put some numbers together so you can see the actual cost, and we're not quite ready to tell you, you know, what would the fee be. I can give you some comparison, if you would like, but we're not quite ready there. The Quimby Act, what does the Quimby Act, you know, basically say? You know, it's a park and recreation dedication and fee state law. It allows the city to adopt a dedication and/or fee requirement. The ordinance must be in place 30 days prior to the filing of a tentative map, and we're currently looking at things in place. So everything that the council has approved is gone. You probably can't get there. The maps that are on file in the city right now, we probably can't get there. If you take a look at the acreage left, it's still a lot of acreage, and that's why I'm double-checking the 1,800-acre figure. I think we've missed a pretty big chunk of land in that. And that came from a different source, so we're running the calculations to find out exactly what we feel we have. From the standpoint of the fee, you know, the council can basically make it either as a dedication requirement of three acres per 1,000, and when you develop the fee, you have to back into it and basically develop the fee based on acreage and population to get where you need to go. If you want to go higher than a three-per-thousand figure, we have to make certain types of findings, and there are many communities that are at the five-per-thousand. If we were a suburban community completely surrounded, and we didn't have all these other recreational amenities, we might want to push for five. But since we've got a lot of other alternatives, the three might work for the town into the future. We have to have general plan policies that set the standards for park development, which we do. We have to develop a schedule, a capital improvement plan, Parks Master Plan, showing how we're going to use the money, you know, what the schedule is, and you have to actually be able to show people what you're going to build or acquire. Otherwise, you have to give the monies back after a period of time. There's some criteria relative to the size of subdivision, and whether or not you can require dedications of land and things of that nature, or just a fee. So it's a pretty straightforward process to establish... So, it's a pretty straightforward process to establish it. What we're doing right now is we're number-crunching to try to come up with figures. From the standpoint of where do we think we need to be in talking to Scott? And I think Scott and I agree, we probably, our biggest need probably is a large community park with athletic facilities. Demuth is wearing out. It's not really efficient. It's got too much overlap of use. And our current master plan has a lot of neighborhood parks. We probably are going to suggest eventually we aggregate those neighborhood parks and take a look at a large community park somewhere in the vicinity of north of Vista Chino to try to balance park and other activity in the community. From the standpoint of the decisions that the council would have to kind of make, and we're going to have to give you some options if you choose to go forward with this, you're going to have to make the decision of what is that ratio? Is it three acres of park per 1,000, or is it four? Is it 3.5? And we'll give you ranges eventually so you can get an idea of what that means. We're going to have to, you know, develop the acquisition cost. So, we're going to have to make some assumptions on cost per acre to acquire land. And in Palm Springs, according to our housing element, that's anywhere from $25,000 an acre up to $150,000 an acre for residential land. We'll have to come up with a figure that's our assumed value. So, it's somewhere, you know, in between there. The council eventually has to tie that down. You're going to have to decide what your improvement cost per acre is. If you look at industry standards, you look at what other cities have done in the Coachella Valley, a fully improved active park is somewhere between $150,000 and $200,000 per acre. And that doesn't get into community buildings, gymnasiums, and a lot of other things that you might want to do. In the Quimby Act, you can cover a number of different types of things. You can, it can be acquisition of land. It could be traditional park space. You can get into facilities. You could get into buildings, as long as they're recreation and culturally driven. You can add an awful lot in there. The fundamental issue you got to come back to is what can the market bear? You just can't take it all the way up. There are cities that have per-unit fees that are as high as $6,000, $10,000 a unit. They're not in the Coachella Valley. Indio, the most recent city that's adopted a fee, it was $1,300 per unit. And if you take a look at that, you take a look at the growth that we would project and number of dwelling units we could get. If you use that fee, that would give you enough money to do a 50-acre community park at $1,300 a dwelling unit, just to give you a ballpark.
50 acre?
50-acre community park at the figure that I gave you as far as acquisition and the like.
How big is Demuth? 61. Comparable in size, a little smaller.
61, very inefficient because of configuration.
Yeah, bad configurations. And you could use the monies to upgrade that facility.
Quimby Act fees can be used for new park development, expansion of existing parks, or upgrades to existing parks. So, in theory, if we had a Quimby Act in place today and we had a reserve of money, we could build a skate park with the Quimby Act money, to give you an example. So, we've got the opportunity for future. We're looking at all the different types of amenities that you could build. And then I think the last issue the council eventually will have to decide is if we give you a figure of, you know, we need X million dollars for parks, you're going to need to decide, do you want the new developers to pay 100% of that? And it's really the new residents. Do you want them to pay 100%, 80% of that, when you back it into a fee? In Indio, they basically said that new development should pay 75%, which left a 25%. And that, you know, could be grant monies, other monies. And as you've heard tonight, you're not likely to have many general fund opportunities to build new park facilities. The good news is, activity is brisk in the development business. I can tell you that we talk to people probably weekly about new residential developments that have not been filed. You know, the downside of that is eventually we're going to have new residents, and we're going to need new park facilities. That is a quick overview. I've got more information. If you want to know where all the parks are on the general plan, or we could do that in a report later to you. There's a couple of opportunities to do this. The process could be, the council wants to enact this immediately. You would have to adopt an urgency ordinance. It requires a four-fifths vote of the council. It would go into effect for a period of 30 days. You could extend it, two 30-day extensions for a total of 90. Because it's a fee ordinance, it's a little bit different than our traditional two-year urgency ordinance. And then at the end of that 90 days, we would have to come back with a more detailed study that would show what the fee would be for a longer-term period. And we would suggest that if we do an interim ordinance through an urgency ordinance, that we probably do something fairly conservative. I've talked to Ed Kibbe at the Building Industry Association, first call I made. I don't want to surprise the building industry. They're aware of Quimby Acts, and as long as we follow the law, it's the city's right to impose it. They will come and remind you that it will mean that a certain percentage of people that could qualify for a house will not be able to for every dollar you add to the cost of a house. And that's just the reality of mortgaging and financing. Mr. Mayor, that completes a quick overview. And Dave Alshire and Scott can fill me in on any questions relative to details of the law and/or our park facilities.
Thank you, Doug. Let me just read into the public record the following quote out of a Desert Sun article on October 17th of last year, when Indio put in a Quimby Act to gain, obviously, the quality of parks in their community. This is Ed Kibbe's quote, who is the executive director of the BIA, the Building Industry Association. His quote is, "The building industry understands that we have a responsibility to correct the impacts we cause on a city when we cause it to grow." So, I think he is supportive of it, as you said, under, you know, the conditions that it's not an excessive tax, not an unfair tax, and so on and so forth. So, and I appreciate you calling him right away. Question, is there a sunset to Quimby?
You mean to the state statute?
No, I mean, if the intent is, as you build the land out and do residential, and you run out of land, do you stop collecting? Is it now remodels? Is it, does it just run out because you have no other land for development?
I mean, theoretically, when you run out of land, yeah, there would be no new development to impose the fee on. You know, there, the communities, I don't know of any community that put the fee in place and then removed it, because there's always some...
Some development somewhere.
Seems like some infill parcels, et cetera.
Always assessed only against residential?
Yes.
No commercial, no hotels, no...
No. The statute specifically says you cannot get to industrial and commercial development.
Just to clarify, so everyone understands that this is basically for residential, for new residential? Not remodels, not additions, not expansions of your current home?
That is correct. It's new residential dwelling units, and it's very defined towards new residential.
So, the intent is, we have a quality of life that we measure with regards to our parks, the ratios you spoke of, the number of acres we have available. And as we increase the number of residents that come in, we start increasing the number of people that use the park, wear the park down, crowd the parks, and now all of a sudden, the quality is somewhat diminished. The intent of Quimby is to maintain a standard that we established, whether it's three acres or five acres, or whatever that ratio is. And then the new residents either pay in total or pay in part towards maintaining that which lured them here in the first place, the quality of life we enjoy in Palm Springs. Okay? And we can use that towards rehabilitations, expansions, and otherwise.
Yes, you can. You just cannot use it for maintenance, routine maintenance. It's got to be capital-driven. And obviously, you can adjust the fee based upon the community needs. If you decide that we needed a different type of community park, or we had to renovate, in theory, you could adjust it in the future. And you can raise and lower it. It's like any fee in the city. You just have to go through a process to make those determinations.
You have to continue showing that there's some relationship between the facilities you're spending the fees on and where you collected it. And when you're talking about neighborhood park facilities, then it's the subdivisions in the neighborhood that pay for it. When you're talking about a community-wide facility, then any project in the community could contribute to that facility.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Oden.
That makes more sense to me. I mean, if we're going to tax new developments, and we only do enhancements in parks that we currently have and not build anything specifically for them, then to me, that's, I don't know, it just doesn't square too well. I have a couple of questions. Do we have any information on the usage of our parks?
From what standpoint?
Just the usage, almost. How many residents use our park, not just... Okay, let me ask this first. If someone wants to use our park for an event, can someone outside the city use it?
Certainly. Any of the fees that we have for rental of any of the park facilities or any of our building rentals, anyone can clearly come in and do that on a weekly basis or whatever. We don't restrict that in any way to city people.
Okay. Do we have any information that shows residents rent the facilities more so than people who live outside of the city?
No, we don't track it that way. I mean, we could certainly go back and analyze our existing data to see how much is out of town versus what is actually local. But it's not something that we have readily available now.
All right. Are there any specific things that we have to provide if we go with Quimby? If we approve this ordinance?
Well, I think the most important thing is you have to provide the parks in a fashion that they meet the needs of the growth in the community. So, you're concerned that, you know, the growth is in the central part of the city, and we spend all the money in the south, and we would have a problem. And the good news is where we need the parks because of lack of parks is where the growth is going to occur. So, I think the first and foremost thing we have to do is make sure that we're balanced in the community and we spend the money appropriately. Is there anything, if it's, does the act require us to do anything in specific? We can use it for any type of facility, trails. I think building industry would probably be concerned if we put too much money in for trail development. But in theory, it could be bikeways, traditional parks, community centers, gymnasium-type buildings. I mean, it really gives you a wide range of opportunity. And I think that as we look at this future, you know, the future of the community, trying to leverage in partnership, as we've been doing for many years, might be a way that, you know, eventually, we can raise the quality of life in the community, not maybe solely on the backs of the new people that moved to town. It's really not the developers. It's the people that buy the house that pay the fee.
Ron, if I could add to that, I think the most significant constraint in the statute has to do with the requirement that you take the money, you put it in account for the purposes of the park development, and you have to keep, you have to spend the money within a specific period of time. You have to have a plan as to how you're going to spend the money. And if you don't follow that plan, you could potentially have to give the money back. So, there's actually a monitoring and tracking process to make sure that it is spent for the improvements in your improvement plan.
And we currently do that with a number of different mitigation fees. And Tom provides a report to Ed Kibbe annually. And we're very routine and regular. I don't think he normally has to chase us down like he does a lot of communities. So, we're going to have to do that accounting, and we just have to show where the money's going to be spent and appropriated. We just can't have a big pool of money that we're not doing anything with it. And in this town, you know, as soon as we're in a position where we can have a pool of money, the first thing we're going to have to do is buy land. Whether we can afford to build the park or not, we are going to have to, you know, tie up some land somewhere in the future. And we can negotiate with developers where they dedicate the land, and they basically dedicate the land an equivalent value as to what the fee would be. And if there's a gap, they pay the additional fee. So, it really has some flexibility in how you work with property owners.
With the ability to actually advance the payment towards some land and then pay ourselves back over future revenues as they come in? Because if you've got to wait to get the money, and it takes you seven years to collect, but you can only own it for five years, based on a slow development and growth pattern, if you built the property, brought it, built it, improved it, and then paid that back, paid your reserves back, your general fund back over time, is that permitted under Quimby?
You could potentially do that, but you'd have to really create a clear record that that improvement, again, is going to be a benefit to the future development. You'd have to, I think, outline areas where you were anticipating development. You'd have to have your, the fee set up for those particular projects. And you'd have to sort of set up a separate fund and a connection between the expenditures you're going to make in those future projects.
Can we get an idea at the next appropriate meeting on Quimby as to the ratios that exist in other communities in the valley?
Yes.
You know, a week above, below, at the average, where's our acreage-to-population ratio stand now?
I don't know specifically, but just generally with what I know about other communities, I would say we're slightly above.
Yeah. I've always assumed that, the numbers I've seen in some of the earlier years.
Most other communities don't have too many developed parklands. Now, that's not to say I don't know what other amenities they count towards open space or recreational facilities, but open space parkland, probably the leader in the valley.
Mr. Mayor.
Although, I'd say if it equates to a three-to-one ratio, that's sort of the minimum you're trying to achieve.
At your base.
Yeah. They, they're, you know, the five-to-one ratio is sort of at the high end, and the three-to-one is a very decent ratio, but it's the, it's at that bottom rung. And that sort of sounds like where we're close to.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, please. Jeannie?
Doug. You said, "We have to track this. We have to track the money. We have to keep..." Who's "we"?
The city.
Yeah, I know. Who's "we"?
Finance director.
Finance director. So, as I look at this proposed personnel changes, I see that finance is losing people. And so, what impact does that have on you?
Actually, on the personnel, it's going to be a net for finance. He's losing his finance and audit budget manager. But we're going to replace that with a lesser position, hopefully, to do more of this accounting bookwork, the busy work. So, actually, it may work out to our benefit, to his benefit, on that tracking system.
I'd like to know that, too, when this comes back.
Yeah.
You know, maybe one comment on that comeback issue is, you know, we've put this ordinance together pretty quickly. I think our theory was that we were not going to overreach with the ordinance. It was going to be sort of set minimum standards. And if you were prepared to do that, we could potentially bring this forward fairly quickly. The study process that Doug described, obviously, you get 30 days and a maximum of two extensions. So, that's a maximum of 90 days to come back with your complete study that is really setting all of the details. And one of the questions at a staff level that we have is, how quickly do you want this on an agenda? And do you want to adopt it as an urgency ordinance that would have immediate effect? Or would it be the normal ordinance process? Normal ordinance process, of course, is a first and second reading in 30 days to become effective. So, it can take a couple of months to get an ordinance so that it is...
What's the urgency? Wait, did you want to talk? What's the urgency issue?
Well, the only urgency would be that if there were projects in process, and they got through the process, they will, would not be required to pay the fees. So, if you do it as an urgency ordinance, then anybody...
I understand.
...walking through is subject.
I got it.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mills?
I was essentially going to ask what Mr. Alshire did only back at Doug, because he's probably the one in charge of the research here. How long would you anticipate it would take you to fill in the blanks on the sample ordinance that we saw tonight? And that's Mr. Alshire also, along with that.
Just a few days. We're pretty close. We might have to do a little more background in, you know, in our staff report. We might have to do a little more background and, you know, in our staff report. You know, I think the, the staff report might take a little more work than actually filling in the blanks on the ordinance, but we're not too far away from having a draft. We're plugging in the numbers right now. We started this afternoon.
I mean, I think it's, it's something I'd certainly like and encourage us to, to do. I think, uh, the sooner the better.
Okay. Council comfortable with a, an urgency finding on this so we can, we put it into place fairly quickly? Or would you prefer?
No, I'm not. I wa, I waited a year and a half to get leaf flowers, and this was mentioned last week, and it's already here. No, I'm not interested in an urgency issue.
Mr. Mayor. I don't see it as, as an urgency issue, but I think it sounds like it can be something that's very good to give us time in case we do have any additional questions within the time period to bring that, that information forward. So, in a timely fashion.
I disagree. I think it's an urgency issue, because the longer we wait, the, the, the less implementation time we're, we're, we're going to have. I mean, we're ba, we're looking at a busy time right, right now, anticipating more development. The longer we wait, the more we're going to lose.
I think the longer you wait, the more revenue you'll, you'll lose, and the greater your impact will be because you've allowed new residents in without.
Right.
Paying their way into the quality of life. I mean, if, if the, if the intent of the ordinance makes sense to allow us to expand and enhance that which we cherish through the new resident, then we should put somebody at the toll gate immediately to start collecting the fees, so that we can start putting the funds together, to start buying the land, to start building the projects. Every day you don't have it, more things get approved, and again, the greater the impacts, without any ability to recapture that funding.
When, when this issue initially came up, my first concern was that, the urgency was that we won't, that there was somehow we could grandfather projects that were already slated, that we could tax them, and it would be a deterrent, I think, to us. Once I found that out, that, that would not take place, certainly I, I'm, I'm in agreement. I think it's something that we should do, but this is the first report that we've had on it. Okay? We've read it, we've asked some questions. What is the urgency? We plan to do it, certainly bring it back to us in a timely fashion, and I think that that's more than acceptable.
See, I can't even say I've read it, because it was faxed to me at work today, so I haven't had an opportunity to read it, and I don't feel comfortable imposing a fee without knowing what I'm doing.
And we're not talking about imposing, we're talking about doing the paperwork to allow us to review it to impose a fee. And if staff can get the paperwork ready so we can look at it and evaluate it properly, which I think we all intend to do, then the sooner we get to that point, I think the better we get to that point.
I agree. Well, you haven't got the support for urgency, so I suggest you just continue working at your normal pace and bring it back to us as soon as you think it's ready.
In a timely fashion.
We'll go down in a, in a, in a normal and timely fashion. Okay? Anything else, Mr. Ready? Well, it is now nine thirty-four. Seeing no further business before the council, we'll stand adjourned. Thank you and good night.